Hello and welcome to the Monday, June 23, 2025 Hillsborough Town Report of Education meeting. In accordance with the State's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Town Department of Education was provided on January 8, 2025 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can I -- can we please take roll?
Mr. DAVIS, Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Lenny Beeter.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Ms. Nurse. Ms. Stotts.
Here.
Mr. Hugh. And Mr. Marini.
Here. We have a quorum. Motion to move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters, for which confidentiality is required, as committed in Section 7b of the act, resolved by the Board of Education in the town of Hillsborough, in the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey, as follows: The matters to be discussed are the superintendence evaluation, a student disciplinary manner, a grievance hearing, and negotiations. The matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
They'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back around 7:30. Thank you.
Hello and welcome back to the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We are now back from executive session. Mr. Eckert, if we could please take role?
Mr. Davis, Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Craig. Ms. Lanning Beeter.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Ms. Nurse.
Here.
Ms. Stats.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
And Mr. Marini.
Here, we have a quorum. Let's stand for... Fudge Legions.
Fudge Legions, to the flag, the United States of America. The Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondents as listed on the agenda. We will move on to the Board President's report. All right, we're going to read some proclamations. Proclamation for recognizing Pride Month, whereas the month of June is observed as Pride Month, a time to honor the Stonewall uprising of June 1969, widely acknowledged as a pivotable moment that spurred the movement for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other sexual and gender minority rights. And whereas our nation's foundational principles affirm that all individuals are created equal, possessing inherent rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and deserve the full recognition and protection of the law. And whereas public health data, including findings from the Center for Disease Control, indicates that LGBTQ+ youth face elevated risks of experiencing violence and higher rates of suicide, it is therefore crucial that all young people in our community, irrespective of their sexual orientation or gender identity, feel genuinely valued, secure, empowered, and supported by their classmates, educators, and community leaders. And whereas Hillsborough Township Public Schools is committed to cultivating an environment of acceptance for all students and actively working to prevent discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity, our school community is undoubtedly enriched and thrives through the diverse tapestry of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities among our students, families, and staff, all of whom contribute to the vibrant character of our educational system. And whereas Hillsborough is indeed a welcoming community and an outstanding place to live, learn, work, grow. And whereas the LGBTQ members of the Hillsborough community are integral to various fields and professions, significantly contributing to a stronger, more inclusive society, now therefore be proclaimed that we, the Hillsborough Township Public Schools, do hereby recognize you and this Pride Month within our district. As Board President, I would like to present a copy of this proclamation to Janette Sina, the Chair of the Staff LGBTQ Alliance, and Kevin Hodeluk, the Advisor for the Student GSA. The next proclamation of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education commending the Hillsborough High School Girls Track and Field Team for their championship achievements, whereas the pursuit of excellence in athletics embodies the spirit of education, perseverance, and teamwork qualities that enrich our school community. And whereas the Hillsborough High School Girls Track and Field Team has demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to these values throughout their remarkable history, and most recently in the 2024-2025 season. And whereas the Hillsborough High School Girls Track and Field Team has achieved an outstanding season securing victories as Skyland Conference Relay Champions, Somerset County Relay Champions, Skyland Conference Champions, and Somerset County Champions. And whereas these remarkable achievements underscore the team's consistent dominance, exceptional skill, unwavering dedication, and outstanding team spirit. And whereas these championship victories represent the culmination of countless hours of rigorous training, unwavering support from coaches, families, and the entire Hillsborough community, and a testament to the athletes' individual and collective talent. And whereas achieving these multiple championships brings immense pride and recognition to the Hillsborough High School and the entire Hillsborough Township School District. And whereas the Hillsborough High School Girls Track and Field Team has served as outstanding role models for our students, demonstrating the importance of sportsmanship, dedication, and relentless pursuit of excellence. And whereas the team's consistent performance has established Hillsborough as a powerhouse in New Jersey high school track and field, showcasing the high level of athletic talent within our district.
If I could have anybody from the Girls Track Team, please go behind the camera and up against the wall. Yeah. So Cassie Montoya is going to represent the Girls Track Team. And maybe you just want to introduce yourself to the community and talk about what it's like to be part of a perennial powerhouse with the multiple championships we had behind there. And maybe you want to speak about your coaching staff as well.
Hi, I'm Cassie Montoya. I'm an incoming senior at Hillsborough High School. We just wanted to thank everyone for being here and recognizing our achievements this season. We work super hard. We practice every day. We go to weight room. We are always running, as obviously. Yeah, it just means a lot to have this accomplishment and so many down, like in the trophy case. So yeah, we just want to thank everyone for being here and also our coaches. Coach Rudy's here today, supporting us. And Coach Reefee couldn't make it, but we want to thank him too for his outstanding coaching.
Thank you, Cassie. And before... Before President Marini reads the next proclamation, I do want to say, if you didn't notice when you were driving by Hillsborough High School, Coach Reefee had a real milestone that I think it's important to point out. Coach Reefee, this past season coached his 100th season in Hillsborough as a coach. No, you are not hearing that incorrectly. 100 seasons, not 100 years. Okay? 100 seasons as a coach, so congratulations to Coach Reefee. Now... We do have some other people to recognize as well.
All right, the next proclamation is for the Hillsborough High School Boys Volleyball Team for achieving the Skyland Cup Championship Title. Whereas the pursuit of excellence in athletics embodies the spirit of dedication, perseverance, and teamwork qualities which enrich our school community, whereas the Hillsborough High School Boys Volleyball Team has demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to these values throughout their remarkable history, and most recently in the 2025 season. Whereas the Hillsborough Boys Volleyball Team achieved a significant milestone by winning the Skyland Cup Championship Title. This remarkable achievement underscores the team's consistent dominance, exceptional skill, unwavering dedication, and outstanding team spirit. This championship victory represents the culmination of countless hours of rigorous training, unwavering support from coaches, families, and the entire Hillsborough community, and a testament to the athletes' individual and collective talent.
And we just found out... First of all, you can clap for the volleyball team, and hang on one second.
And we would like to...
Just one second.
We would like to commend Jack Casey as the 2025 Skyland Conference Coach of the Year.
Can I have the Boys Volleyball Team and Coach Casey, please come up over here for a picture? Please walk to the side of the camera. Do I have any volleyball players here too? Yeah, please, yeah, come on. Coach Casey's going to say a couple words about his season and his team.
I also just found out this morning about the Coach of the Year award.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But really, it is just a testament to the athletes. They put together such an impressive season. They had a 1-4 start to the season, that they then went on a 24-game win streak, which I had to keep checking to make sure that was the real number, as it kept going up and up and up. But a truly dedicated team that was resilient, face-down game point, match point, again and again, and just kept that record going. Couldn't go quite to the state championship, but we made it just right there to the semis. And it was a... Really proud of everything they did this season. It was an awesome job.
Congratulations. And we have one more team that we would like to honor?
All right. We would like to commend the Hillsborough High School Baseball Team for achieving the Central Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship Title. Whereas the pursuit of excellence in athletics embodies the spirit of dedication, perseverance, and teamwork qualities that enrich our school community, the Hillsborough High School Baseball Team has demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to these values throughout their remarkable history, and most recently the 2025 season. The Hillsborough High School Baseball Team achieved a historic milestone by winning the Central Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship Title. And this remarkable achievement marks the first time since 2012 that the Hillsborough High School Baseball Team has secured this prestigious sectional championship, underscoring their exceptional skill, unwavering dedication, and outstanding team spirit. This championship victory represents the culmination of countless hours of rigorous training, strategic preparation, and wavering support from coaches, families, and the entire Hillsborough community, and a testament to the athletes' individual and collective talent. And achieving the Central Jersey Group Four Sectional Championship brings immense pride and recognition to the Hillsborough High School and the entire Hillsborough Township School District. Congratulations.
One second, one second, Coach, one second. One second, Coach.
We would also like to commend Matthew Musco as the 2025 Central Jersey Sports Radio Coach of the Year.
Now the baseball team can come up here for a picture. Can I get all coaches and players to come up for a picture?
I'm convinced at this point you're doing this just for the memorabilia.
For those of you who don't know, I collect Hillsborough sports memorabilia. And in my office, I have lots of autographed items. And now I have the seniors autograph the ball for me from the championship team. And everybody else, I have a picture too. So these will be going up proudly in my office as well. So I want to sincerely thank the baseball team for knowing that about me and for putting something together. And I also want to sincerely thank the baseball team, Coach. Before I turn it over to you, you were the ninth seed, right?
Correct.
You aren't supposed to be winning state sectional titles.
No, no, we weren't.
So can you kind of tell the community here, you know, going into the tournament as the nine seed, you know, what are you thinking? And then, and then kind of what happened from there?
Absolutely. So special group of players this year, our senior class, we've been looking forward to this year for a few years now with their talent, with their leadership skills, with their ability level. So we were very excited at the start of this year and started off 5-1, very hot. We had a rough middle patch of our year, but then we finished up really strong with 6-1 finish with four of those wins coming in our state tournament as the nine seed. I give a lot of credit to the players, obviously. Our coaching staff, tremendous preparation this year. Our conference is loaded with very good teams across the state. And that prepared us as well too for our state tournament run, which was on the road for two games. We knocked off the number one seed, Hunter and Central, one of our top rivals. We got a home game with our neighbors at Montgomery that we took care of business there. And then we went on the road against Old Bridge and had a real nice comeback when we were down 6-3 in the fifth inning. We scored 10 runs in the last three innings to go ahead 13-6 with our final score there.
Amazing, amazing, amazing feat this year. The one thing that I wanted to point out too, and the other coaches, the players, maybe the parents can point this out too. What I noticed when you guys won and you were presented with the trophy is you were so stoic, like you were so calm, like you didn't get excited about that in any. I'm joking for those of you who are there. The guy was jumping through the ceiling and, well, outside is no ceiling. But there's this picture of you on centraljersey.com or whatever. I don't know if you've seen it. You know, we talk about in this school district, joy and purpose. And I think you captured that in that picture when you were jumping up, receiving that trophy, and bringing it over to your players. Can you talk about what that moment meant for you when you guys finally won that?
Of course. I mean, I think it might be on your collage there as well too. One of the bottom picture corners, possibly?
Not the one I'm thinking of. Oh, wait, there's one, there's one. Yes, that works very well.
As an alum of the district, as a current employee of the district, as a resident of this town, it meant a lot to everybody involved in this. The parents, past players, past coaches. The program will be there forever. The seniors are moving on, but they've hung a banner in the gym. They've updated the banner on the back of our dugout. And it means a lot to me personally, to my coaching staff, to everybody involved with the program, that the amount of texts that I was getting that night, the phone call I received from you, and then Mr. Delolo, the principal at the high school, was special as well too. I saved those on my phone. Hearing from a lot of the community, and he also coaches from around the state as well too, was very special because it's been a rough few years as far as our success levels and the culmination of that this year. Even with a record of 14 and 11 was very, very special and something that these boys and their families will cherish forever, hopefully.
Absolutely. Nothing can ever take that away from you. And thank you, Coach Mosco. I really want to thank all of our teams, all of our coaches, all of our parents, all of our players, and especially our seniors, especially if you graduated and you came back for a board meeting tonight to be recognized. Thank you so much for that. Congratulations again, Coach.
Thank you very much.
And I can say, I think the finals was during the senior awards. So I was sitting next to Principal Delolo and he's following on his phone. Jane and I were sitting there getting updates during the game. And we're like down, and then we're coming back and stormed all the way back. So it was really, I could tell he was following along very intently and very excited when you guys won. So congratulations again.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we'll take a two to three minute break. If you want to take any pictures or say thank you, and then we'll continue on with the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank everyone who has participated in our programs, parents, families, and the teachers as well. We can go to the next slide. This is just a quick glance look at all the schools, including the six that you guys have participating in the Hillsborough Township School District. But we're reaching millions of families. We are having thousands of schools participate, and we are so lucky to have your six be a part of us. Next slide. And this is really where, this is just one year to recap, but I know that our volunteers who are here and the ones that are, were not able to make it because I know that it's, uh, school has let out and they're on vacation. But this is just a quick glance of everything that these teachers have done for us. So like I said, six participated. Over thirty-three hundred students and staff are receiving heart healthy information, and that's in various capacities. Some schools will kick off our programs where I come in and we kick it off that way. Other staff members are introducing it to their whole school in smaller class sizes, and then they are taking the time, the effort, the dedication, and that hard work to plan activities throughout the entirety of our program. From that thirty-three hundred, we have over a thousand one hundred students and families that completely committed to our program. They registered, they're online, they're receiving heart healthy information, and they're also able to take some challenges, which leads me to the next one. Uh, oh, sorry, can we go back to that? Sorry, last, the next bullet point. But, um, we've had a hundred eighty-four students and their families learn hands-only CPR. And so that's one of the biggest things that we want to reach with our families is that, yes, these volunteers are leading it with amazing activities in their classroom, but the families still have a community engagement piece where they're at home, learning hands-only CPR with their families. And so while that number to some might look like only a hundred eighty-four out of the thirty-three hundred that receive this information, we like to at least triple that number because that's just one hundred eighty-four students. We know that there is a parent helping them or a guardian, and there might be some siblings watching along as well. Just last thing to say about this slide is that collectively over these six schools, there was fifty-five thousand dollars raised going back to the American Heart Association so that we can continue to do what we do and continue to improve our mission. And of that, six, uh, it's changed a little bit since I sent this over to be board-approved to share it, but now six thousand dollars has gone back and been invested into the schools to advance your health and PE equipment, the department, and to continue to give back to your students. Now we're ready for those pictures. Okay. These are, this is just a small, small snippet. Not every school is included in this because sometimes it's just, we're so excited and there's no time for photos. But over at Triangle, Ron is, I don't even know what he calls it. To me, it's a giant skip it, but he's getting all of his third and fourth graders involved in his kids' heart challenge. We have principals and the volunteer, the PE volunteers who are getting slimed to celebrate. We had Hillsborough Elementary, we had seventeen teachers, I think it was, commit to doing inflatable race. So, um, it was hilarious, it was fun, and it was a great way to wrap up their kids' heart challenge. And I'm lucky that I've been invited to all of these events. And again, highlighting AEDs. So we're talking about heart health in so many different capacities. And my last slide to focus and highlight on these volunteers and to give them some recognition that they deserve all, over all of the years that they've participated. If I call your name and you're here, I know there's only a couple of you, but at Otten Road, we have Roz and Jack who have done an amazing job. I have a certificate of appreciation for you guys. At Amsterdam, I know Scott couldn't be here, but we have Uncle Scott, Serena, and Jason over at HES. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, guys. At Sunny Mead, we have Christian who took it on within that first year. Triangle, Ron has been leading the program, and I know Jason, you're over at Woods Road as well, but we have Megan who has, um, taken over that program as well. And the last group of people that I want to thank are you, Mr. Volpe, for saying, for allowing them to do this, and to the principals for saying yes to the program, the main office staff, everyone in the Hillsborough community is so, so kind and accepting, and I'm very excited to continue the work that we are doing with your school district. So thank you, guys, for letting me have a few minutes. I appreciate everything that you guys have done. So thank you.
Would any of my, would any of my PE teachers like to make a comment about your efforts? Serena, you at least have to tell me who won the HES inflatable race because that's pretty cool.
Well, I have to tell you, the inflatable race, first of all, that's the fact that seventeen of our staff members volunteered and purchased their costumes to race in that was amazing. When I first started this ever ago, um, we only raised, I shouldn't say we only raised, but we raised like three, we started as three thousand dollars, and we raised over eighteen thousand dollars this year, um, as our little elementary school that we are. So, um, that is impressive. But, um, our winner was our first-year teacher, Mr. Slater, came in first place. But we had best distraction, which was Mrs. Cornberger, and best dance moves while she was on her way down there was Mrs. Laurie. So it was very fun. So, thank you again for supporting this.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Katie. We'll continue to partner with you. My superintendent's report continues, and I'm sorry that it's going a little bit longer than we had thought, um, but I, I need to go over something that's, that's very important and relative to, to everyone here. One of the things I want to make sure of is that I provide consistent fiscal and financial information, not only to the board, but to the community. So part of my superintendent's report is about the fair funding school fight, um, and that fight for me continues. And I'll tell you why it continues. We all know that the board took action to take advantage of the opportunity provided by the state, um, in raising the tax levy. And some people are certainly going to feel that, some more than others. That's why it's so important for me to be fiscally responsible moving forward. The other thing that couples with tax increases also has to do with home assessments. And when you have home assessments along with the tax increases, those are the two things that can, can increase your property tax bill. It's not one or the other. We raised the levy for the school fund, and when the township assesses and the county assesses your houses, that makes it go up as well. And I was having a conversation with my mother recently and said, yeah, you know, I, for those of you who don't know, I'm also a Hillsborough resident. I said, my taxes are going to be higher, not only because we're raising taxes, uh, for the general levy for our education program here in Hillsborough, but also because my home assessment went up a lot this year. And my mom, who lives in Middlesex County in Woodbridge Township, said, what do you mean? I said, well, you understand, you know, when you raise the tax levy, the taxes go up, but also when your house gets reassessed, that causes your taxes to go up as well. What do you mean you got your house reassessed? I said, what do you mean, what do I mean? And it led me down this rabbit hole that it's important for me to share with the Hillsborough community. Taking a step back for a second, I do want to go over part of the state aid formula and some of the variables, and I'll try not to bore you, and I'll try to make this as concise as possible. We all understand the local cost share. One of the variables in the local cost share in the state aid formula has to do with property values. I don't care if you understand the formula behind me or not, or all the wordage, wording, but please take a look in red, that certainly property values are a part of the state aid formula. I think we can all agree to that. So when I was having conversations with my mother and talking about property values and houses being reassessed, she didn't understand what I meant. And I was ready to like start pulling my hair out because I'm like, what do you mean? Your, your house gets reassessed, the value goes up. And my mom said, no, 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 it doesn't. I go, what do you mean it doesn't? My mom told me, we bought our house in nineteen seventy-seven when you were four years old for seventy-four thousand dollars. And I said, well, what's the assessed value right now? She told me eighty thousand dollars. Her house was assessed at eighty thousand dollars. Any house in New Jersey at eighty thousand dollars is, is insane. So I did some digging and continued to look a little bit further. So if you, if you look at the board behind me, I want to show you a little history of me. And you won't be able to figure out where these houses are specifically, but there's a picture of my childhood home, and there's a picture of my current home. One is in Woodbridge Township, and one is in Hillsborough. The current township assessed value in, of my parents' house, as I just said, is eighty thousand dollars. Eight zero, not eight hundred, eight zero. The current assessment of my home is seven hundred thirty thousand dollars. How many times have these houses been assessed? In Hillsborough, our houses are assessed for tax purposes on an annual basis, meaning that when tax assessors look at our houses, they assign a value, that value goes up, we have higher property values in Hillsborough. According to Woodbridge Township, my parents' house is only worth eighty thousand dollars, and they have been reassessed three times since nineteen seventy-seven. They were only assessed anytime they did work on the house, not annual assessments like they do here in Hillsborough. So I was like, you know what? I said, maybe my parents just live in a really crappy house, although I visit them and everything too, it's not that bad. So I said, let me just go on Zillow, which has nothing to do in any way, shape, or form with the state aid formula, and see how much the market value is. My parents' market value of their house is about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so their assessed value is about fifteen percent of that. My house on Zillow is around nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars. I was presently surprised, but my assessment is at eighty percent of market value. So my house market value is worth nine fifteen, assessed at seven hundred and thirty. My parents' house is assessed around five hundred and thirty, assessed at eighty thousand dollars. When your house is assessed that low, the only way that you can raise the amount of taxes you need is to have a higher tax rate. So Woodbridge Township pushes their tax rate higher because their assessed values are lower, and that's how they get their money. We comparatively looking at, at Hillsborough have a lower relative tax rate. I'm sure some people would say it's still too high, but relative to Woodbridge, we have a lower tax rate because our assessments are higher. And the actual property taxes, when you figure out for, for the amount value, is comparable in each, nobody's paying, they're not paying much less than, than, than we are here in Hillsborough, the amounts are comparable. But my question is, if the state aid formula is partially based on property value, does the equalized value variable control for this? Maybe it does. Maybe there are people out there smarter than me who can quickly explain this, but I'm looking for answers and haven't gotten any. And I don't think anybody sitting in this room right now knows, hey, yeah, the formula definitely accounts for this by, we really don't know. So what did I do next? I started doing my homework, and I started looking around Somerset County because you know what's happened in Somerset County with state aid over many years, right? Who's been hit the hardest? Hillsborough has been hit the hardest. So as I started looking around, I started looking at the different municipalities. Now, most of them say they do it annually, like Hillsborough. But when you get into the details with some of the towns, now I don't have all the details for all of the towns. When you look at like P-Pac Gladstone, and I forget which district they, they go into, but they do theirs annually, but on a four-year rotation, which means they're doing the property assessments every year, but your house is only getting hit once every four years. If you look at Bernard's, uh, they're inspecting approximately twenty percent of the township properties each year, so you're probably getting hit once every five years. Or as I know, I'm getting hit in Hillsborough each and every year. Warren, uh, they're, they're doing, um, every, every, they're field inspecting every property approximately every five years. If you look at some other ones, Somerville, their last county, their last township-wide assessment evaluation was in two thousand and ten. And even the ones that say annually, I just don't have all of the details. Southbound Brook, their last evaluation townwide was in two thousand and nine. Montgomery, right down the road, their last townwide evaluation assessments for assessments was in nineteen ninety-eight. They do assess when there's, uh, property changes made, but that is when. So here's my problem. My problem is we have a variable in the state aid formula that is not being applied equally across all municipalities and all school districts. And my question is, again, does the state aid formula somehow account for this, that everything is equalized, or is this something that I can't get answers on because nobody knows? The big question behind me again is, does the equalized value component of the state aid formula, uh, take care of this at all? How does it, or does it? I don't know. And you know, we have a gubernatorial election coming up, and everybody that I've spoken to, every lawmaker, every even sometimes, you know, board members or anybody, well, the next governor, well, the next governor, the next governor is going to take this on. So I want to put a call out right now to both Mikey Sherrill and Jack Chiderelli. One of the two of you is going to be the next governor in the state of New Jersey. And I would suggest that you get on the front side about figuring out about the state aid formula, so it doesn't take another year once you're elected, and have somebody answer this question. Is potentially the state aid formula off because houses are being assessed differently in different communities? Now, I will again say, maybe it is, but nobody can tell me that. So I would love if somebody could tell me that. I would love if either candidate would reach out to me to have a continued discussion about state formula funding and go over these variables. And I think it's also important for the people of Hillsborough to know, uh, this little nugget of information that I discovered. As I discover more information, if either candidate reaches out to me, you can get, you can get a seat with me at any time, I will report back to the board, and I will certainly report back to the community as well. So, thank you for that time. Moving on. I still have other things to talk about, too. Okay, something fun. On our website, we now have an AI chatbot. If you go down into the bottom corner of our website, which I'm not going to be able to pull up right now, but I can maybe pull up a picture, in the bottom right corner, you'll find an H, and you can click on it, and you can ask any questions of our AI chatbot. Who's the board president? It should tell you Paul Marini. Who's the superintendent? It should tell you Mike Volpe. When's the first day of school? What phone number can I call for this? So we are hoping that people start to use this AI chatbot for a couple of reasons. As this is used, we can see what questions people are asking, and we can prioritize and bolster those things on our website. And honestly, when an AI chatbot first starts, first starts, it sometimes makes mistakes, and the more you ask it the questions, and the more it tells you who's the board president, if somebody says Mike Volpe, we can correct it and say, no, it's Paul Marini, and then we get those corrections over time. So it's just another way that we are trying to reach out to the community to find ways that we can communicate with you that is easy for you. Sometimes digging through a website is tough, and we want to make it as easy as possible. So please check it out, and the more questions you ask, the better it's going to be. The last item on my superintendent's report is an exciting item. We have two new hires on the agenda tonight, and they are going to be the two newest members of our administrative team. And I'd like to introduce both of them and give them an opportunity to introduce themselves to the Hillsborough community. The first person is going to be our new supervisor of social studies and gifted education, and that is Noelle Baxter. And she is coming to us from Scotch Plains, where she has been a supervisor for thirteen years, is that, or thirteen years total as a supervisor, right? Am I right about that? Sorry, fourteen years. Yeah, she's very experienced, let's put it that way, and in the area of social studies, and we are very excited to have her on board. We seem to be getting a lot of people from Scotch Plains recently, and as long as you're good, we'll keep taking you. So, uh, Noelle, if you wouldn't mind, uh, coming up to the podium, uh, welcome first of all, give her a little round of applause if we could. And just, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself, and she'll be starting with us on July one.
Sure, thank you. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be joining the team. It is nice to be coming to a team where I do have some familiar faces, which is great, but I'm really excited to get started. Uh, my family is here, so we do live in Burnertville, so that was very helpful to know about, um, you know, how things are working across the county. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm just really excited to be joining the team here. I love being a supervisor. I love working with teachers. Social studies is definitely my passion, but I've been, you know, had the, uh, opportunity to supervise other areas over the, the several years that I've done this job. So I'm looking forward to working with the gifted and talented team as well. Um, and again, just thank you, I'm really excited to be here.
Welcome aboard, Noelle. You gotta wait a little bit down the agenda, your name will formally come up, and then you'll actually be hired, but it's still nice to, to get to know you. And then I'd like to introduce Dan Polis, too, who is going to be our new supervisor of physical education, health, and nursing. And Dan is one of our own. He currently works for us here at Hillsborough High School and is a budding leader and has a lot of experience in both physical education and curriculum development, and we are happy to get him on board, too. Dan, would you mind, uh, coming to the podium, too, and introducing yourself to the Hillsborough
I guess your superintendent's report is going to be a little bit longer because I prepared something.
That's great. Please feel free.
So, good evening, Mr. Marini, Mr. Volpe, members of the board and the community. I'm honored and truly grateful for the opportunity to serve as the new K-12 supervisor of health, physical education, and nursing. I first want to thank the board and the district leadership team for placing your trust in me to be an advocate for the health and well-being of our children. Throughout the interview process, your commitment to our students shined through time and time again. My mission in, in this new role includes two overarching objectives, both of equal importance. First, I will ensure that our students receive the best, most meaningful health and physical education experience possible while preparing them to live healthy and active lifestyles. I look forward to accomplishing this objective by supporting and collaborating with our K-12 health and physical education teachers in coordination with our administrative team. My second objective is to support our dedicated nursing staff with providing quality healthcare for our learning community. Our nurses are expected to serve in many critical capacities, assessing student health, administering medications, managing chronic conditions, providing first aid, developing individual care plans, and educating students and staff on the health and wellness topics that are just, are just a few of their many actions our nurses take on a daily basis. I look forward to working alongside our nurses and being a proponent of their challenging yet rewarding duties. Thank you, Mr. Volpe, and the entire district's leadership team for taking such a vested and genuine interest in the success of my new role. I couldn't ask for a better group of professionals to work with, and together, I know we will continue to put the wellness of our learners first and give our students the tools they need to live healthy, active, and meaningful lives. Thank you again for this exciting opportunity, and I'm ready to get to work.
Dan, have you met Noelle? Because you're going to be right down the hallway from her, so you might as well say hello. And, and, and do you know Jack? He, he's one of your, he's going to be one of your teachers. Awesome, awesome. Congratulations to both of the new supervisors. A little bit down the list, uh, you will be formally approved, and then you're hired, and you both have July first start dates. And Mr. President, that now concludes my superintendent's report.
All right, awesome. Let us continue. So we will move on to committee reports. Uh, we'll start with education. Ms. Jackson.
Um, we met, um, last week. Can't recall the date, um, but, um, based on the agenda, um, we reviewed the new performing arts, music, and related arts courses, um, HHS course title changes, um, HMS and HHS math curriculum, uh, new curriculum for Algebra One Part One and Algebra One Part Two CP, uh, new curriculum for US Two History, and, uh, approval of ARIS HMS literacy course title changes, uh, grade six fiction book, and I think that was, um, nope. We had, um, the motion, there'll be a motion to approve the Dance, Art, Music, and Applied Technology curriculum, and I think that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to HR. Ms. Nurse?
Yes. Our committee met on Wednesday, June eighteenth. We started with a personnel matter and then talked about, um, a request for building monitors. We then moved on to a discussion about a few unbudgeted positions within the special ed. department because of our increase in numbers, um, to, and our need to meet code. We, uh, then talked about the approval of the supervisors that you just met, and, um, we had a few other personnel matters that we needed to discuss, and we had a brief discussion on the vote sixteen NJ, which I believe is going to be a discussion, uh, at this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Davis is not here, so I will cover operations, and I'm just looking through my minutes because I was here. I believe we discussed the, uh, building rental fee schedule, um, which we will be updating. Uh, we discussed the status of the Bloomingdale Environmental Cleanup and payments that were outstanding for that effort. Uh, we also talked about the Catholic Charities, uh, agreement for before and aftercare, uh, programs. Um, we discussed, uh, an informational item on the eligibility of resident, non-resident students, um, and we agreed to bring, uh, a policy update to the board, um, and discuss the mid-year, uh, recognition items, um, and an update in the status of the protective gate at Hillsborough High School project. All right? And for the governance meeting, a little bit shorter of agenda, we did again talk about the mid-year reorganization appointment consolidation that we have on the agenda tonight. Uh, we already have a hundred items or so, so we figured we consolidate that as best as possible. We also discussed the votes, vote sixteen NJ, which we'll be discussing, and we discussed about the, uh, pending board retreat, uh, discussing that we would send, uh, kind of a date, um, assessment for board members for their availability, uh, for that moving forward. All right. So with that, uh, we will now move on to the first public comment period, uh, public input on the reorganization and regular action agenda. We very much welcome input from the public during the board meetings. There'll be two, three-minute periods of time that may be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do over there attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment, uh, items are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. There's a second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school district issue that a member of, of the public feels may be of concern of the residents of the school district. That's for file zero one six seven before you say your comment. You'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are structured as question and answer sessions, rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board, and since the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times that a member of the public, uh, makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions, kind of the Public Meetings Act, the Privacy Rights of Public Employees, and comes there and did not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Do we have any members of the public that wish to make comments? All right, seeing none, I will close the first public comment period. Uh, we'll discuss the vote NJ session after the action agenda, so we can now move on to the, uh, we'll do the approval of minutes. Ten dot one, motion to approve regular meeting minutes, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and motion to approve executive session minutes, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion in a second? All in favor? All right, now we'll now move on to negotiations.
So, uh, as Mr. Marini had mentioned before, we came to an agreement with the HEA, so I would ask for the board's consideration to approve the negotiations agenda as follows: ratifying the agreement between the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Education Association for the term of July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty thirty. Can't even fathom that, but through twenty thirty.
All right, can I get a motion in a second? Any discussion? I'm not sure how much we can discuss before voting, but any discussion for the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini. Yes, motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you for everybody who's been involved with that. I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following motions when it comes to the mid-year reorganization: designation of signatories, official newspaper, depositories for school funds, board auditors, architect of record, school physicians, insurance brokers of record, the mid-year motion appointments, board policies, job descriptions, existing school district curricula, field trip destinations, strong plus model for evaluations, membership in the NJSAAA and Skyland Conference, board secretary, purchases from state contract vendors, advertising bids for goods and services, and cooperative purchasing.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini.
Yes, motion passes. I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions in the area of education: affirming the superintendent's HIV determinations, uh, professional travel-related expenses, new performing music and related arts course proposals, HHS course title changes, revised HMS and HHS math curriculum, approving new curriculum for Algebra One Part One and Algebra One Part Two CP, new curriculum for US Two Honors Course, ARIS HMS literacy course title changes, a grade six fiction book, the application for the Stop the Bleed Grant Program, staff to administer model testing for ESL, the Teacher Climate and Culture Expansion Grant in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, Project Man Expansion Grant in the amount of $60,962, project manager and lesson planners for the work under the Teacher Climate and Culture Expansion Grant, long-term suspensions of students whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent, Dance, Art, Music, and Applied Technology curriculum writing, stipends for curriculum writing training, stipends for summer science institutes, revised list of teachers for the Summer Credit Advancement Program, and the revised list of staff for the Summer Multilingual Learners Program.
All right, I have four walk-ons. 13 dot 20, be resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, here in reference to as the board, hereby ratifies and reaffirms the recommendation of the superintendent to reinstate the student on June 5, 2025, as more specifically set forth in the resolution that is attached here to and made a part here of. Be it further resolved that superintendent is requested to provide the student's family with a written statement of the board's decision together with a copy of this resolution. 13 dot 21, be resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, here in reference to as the board, hereby ratifies and affirms the recommendation of the superintendent to reinstate the student on June 5, 2025, as more specifically set forth in the resolution that is attached here to and made a part here of. Be it further resolved that superintendent is requested to provide the student's family with a written statement of the board's decision together with a copy of this resolution. 13 dot 22, be it resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, here in reference to as the board, hereby adopts the recommendation of the superintendent to continue the suspension of a student whose name is on file in the superintendent's office until the next regular meeting of the board, as more specifically set forth in the resolution that is attached here to and made a part here of. Be it further resolved that superintendent is requested to provide the student's family with a written statement of the board's decision together with a copy of this resolution. And 13 point 23, be resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, here in reference to as the board, hereby adopts the recommendation of the superintendent to continue the suspension of a student whose name is on file in the superintendent's office for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year, as more specifically set forth in the resolution that is attached here to and made a part here of. Be it further resolved that superintendent is requested to provide the student's family with a written statement of the board's decision together with a copy of this resolution. And this is a new one?
Mr. President, that's a fifth walk-on resolution denying the request for reinstatement of a student for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you. 2025, okay, thank you very much. And that would be 13 point 24?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. Now, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion before the board votes? Ms. Stats?
This is regarding 13.7, motion to approve new curriculum for US II Honors course. It's described as an additional advanced-level coursework option because there's also AP-US History offered, and of course, there's also US History II CP. And I noticed US History I CP and US History I Honors have the same number of students in them, which I just find that interesting. But also, especially since there's already an AP-US History course, to have yet another advanced level for them, but again, just one level for everybody else, that's a concern I've been expressing in other areas. Also, in another department, I noticed that this year, for seniors, there's two AP courses as well as an Honors course, and then CP for everybody else, just one level CP. And the Honors course that's offered has only 10 students, so it concerns me that when you're offering this other course, that'll take a teacher away from reducing the number of class sizes for the CP and/or the other, for the AP course. So again, I'm just concerned about the attention that's given to providing variety to advanced-level students as opposed to all the other students.
Thank you. Any other comments before the board votes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
No for 13.7, yes for everything else.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. I'd ask for the board's consideration in the area of human resources. This is a long list, so please bear with me. Approving resignations and retirements, appointments for '25-'26, the reappointment of district staff for '25-'26, change in employment status for '25-'26, transfer and change in assignment for '25-'26, separation agreement, rescinding employment contract for '24-'25, approving leaves of absence, revising a mentor contract for '24-'25, turnkey trainers for '24-'25, six-period coverage for '24-'25, rescinding a student teaching placement for '24-'25, proving student teachers for '25-'26, proving parent chaperones for the FBLA Leadership Conference, summer work for '24-'25, the high school weight room staff, extra coverage, fall coaches for '25-'26, the revised HPSA employment contract for '25-'26, revised extended school program, nursing, CST, and transportation work for the summer of '24-'25, revised renewal of non-tenured certificated staff for '25-'26, revised renewal of tenured certificated staff for '25-'26, revised renewal of instructional assistance for '25-'26, revised renewal of registered nurses and personal nurses and aides for '25-'26, revised renewal of HEA office personnel for '25-'26, revised renewal of clerical assistants for '25-'26, revised renewal of building monitors for '25-'26, revised renewal of lunch aids for '25-'26, revised renewal of custodians, maintenance, and mechanic workers for '25-'26, revised renewal of bus drivers and bus aides for '25-'26, authorizing the superintendent to make appointments of non-administrative personnel during the summer, and creating an unbudgeted building monitor position. I just want to be clear that all those revised renewals of staff are because of the contract being done, and we had to put them back on with their new salaries. That's why it's so long today.
Thank you very much for that explanation, and we'll take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion before the board votes? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passed. And I know they're not here, but I'd like to formally welcome Mrs. Baxter and Mr. Bolis into their new supervisory positions. In the area of operations, I would ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions: Monthly bills, monthly financial statement, financial status, line-item transfers, addendum to settlement agreement, a settlement agreement, and another settlement agreement, and a third settlement agreement. Details are in administrative content. Agreements with Catholic charities for before and after-school care for the '25-'26 school year, the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment, an agreement with Effective School Solutions LLC, approving professional services agreement with Phoenix Advisors for the '25-'26 school year, joining the North Jersey Wastewater Cooperative Pricing System, approving the joint transportation agreement with Delaware Valley Regional High School, disposal of books, the '25-'26 municipal tax levy payment schedule for Hillsborough Township and Millstone Borough Municipality, the waste disposal contract for the '25-'26 school year, professional service providers for the '25-'26 school year, approving a nursing services contract for the '25-'26 school year, door monitoring and access control, a contract to Garden State Pavement Solutions for work at Hillsborough Middle School, accepting a donation, approving capital maintenance reserve transfer, approving out-of-district placements for the '25-'26 school year, approving the use of the facilities fee schedule for the '25-'26 school year, approving the quote for the fire alarm equipment replacement at Hillsborough Elementary School, and approving the '25-'26 parent transportation contracts.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. In the area of policy, I would ask for the board's consideration to approve policy 5111 as reviewed by the Operations Committee for first reading.
That's it?
That's it. That's the only one in that section.
Can I get a motion in a second? Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. We'll move on to the second public comment session. We very much welcome input from the public during the board meeting. There'll be two-minute, 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open to public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district, as per file 0167. Before you say your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. Rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. Since the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. If a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions, kind of note the Open Public Meetings Act, the privacy rights of public employees encompass their end, and do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public
Good evening. Jean Bates, HEA Secretary and Negotiations Co-Chair for HEA. I want to take a moment on behalf of our membership and our negotiation team to thank you for an excellent partnership during the negotiations process. Our membership was incredibly pleased with the results that came from the agreement. I'd like to thank you for all of your time and effort in the process. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no others, I will close the final public comment. I'll open up to the board. I know there were some questions as we sent around.
Mr. Marini? I don't know, are you students that wanted to speak?
Yes.
This would be the time for you to speak.
Yes. I appreciate that, Ms. Nurse, thank you.
Hi, so I'm Orav, and he's Nishit. We're from the high school, and we're the co-presidents of Hillsborough Middle School Science Olympiad. We basically go to the middle school, help them out with Science Olympiad, help them understand what it is. So the issue we're running into is Ms. C., the old advisor, has retired, and we do not have a new advisor. And if we do not have a new advisor, we're not able to continue the club, as we need the advisors to sign us up for competitions, deal with the paperwork, et cetera. So we're wondering if the... We've been looking for new advisors, but if we're not able to get new advisors, we're looking to see if we're able to do what HHS Robotics does and have the middle schoolers come to the high school instead of us coming to them, so we do not need a advisor.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I know you emailed the board as well, and I certainly appreciate your students coming up here and advocating for that. What I can tell you is, first, we will continue to recruit for an advisor for you, and then we can have discussions about that in committees if we do want to restructure the way that anything is done. But we will actively recruit for someone for you, and we will have continued discussions. Unfortunately, the board can't make a decision on that right now, but we will talk about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, Ms. Nurse? I can't, I can't, I can't.
No one else interested in talking.
All right. So now we will close the public comment. All right. Yeah, so now, for those who aren't aware, there is something called Vote 16-NJ. It's something that's been approved, I believe, by the governor's office to allow individual municipalities to allow 16-year-olds and up to vote in school board elections only. I believe, to this point, to my awareness, there's only one district in the state that has done this. I think that's the Newark one that allows this right now. But our student rep, Sanjana, went to the committee, township committee meeting, advocating for this, and the one question she was asked was, well, what does the board think about this? So she reached back out, we did a quick couple-question survey, and then there was some feedback from the board members who had strong feelings one way or the other, and I guess the township committee was looking for our opinion on the matter, not that it matters, they make a decision. We could all say, all of us want it, and they could say no, we could say none of us want it, and they could say yes, but they weren't interested in the board's opinion. So what I'm going to do is take feedback, consolidated feedback from board members from what was either said in this meeting, or if any members would like to provide any written feedback, I will also provide that to the township committee. I'll send it to the board before I send it to the township committee, so in case I misstate anyone's comments or comments in general, we can do that. But I wanted to open up this remaining board committee meeting time, board meeting time with board member comment session. If anybody would like to present any comments or feedback or thoughts, you can add them now and/or provide them in writing, and I can provide them to the township. So is anybody that would like to? Ms. Nurse?
I'll share my thoughts, and they're not very strong, they're initial thoughts that I have. I think it's wonderful that we have our student population advocating to be advocates for themselves and for others and to be active participants in the community. However, I do think, you know, there's so much in our society where, you know, we consider adults 18, and they... Unfortunately, there seems to be not a lot of privileges given to adults at 18 anymore, I think more so 21. So there are very few things at 18, one of which is the ability to vote in all types of elections. I think the high school career is a great place to learn how to go about deciding what is your views as a person, as an individual, as somebody who is looking at the school, and how certain elections, such as the student body president and other positions, could affect you as a person and your school community. And I think it probably should stay there and allow them to learn that it is not just about the individual that you know, but what platform is there standing for. And so I do believe that I am not in favor right now of the Vote 16 New Jersey.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Ms. Jackson?
I would not be in favor of this. I think it's a great lesson to incorporate into high school. I don't think it's... I think there's, and I think the best example we saw was the vote to raise taxes. There's a whole financial component that someone at age 16 just doesn't understand. It's an experience thing, it's a, you know, it's a life learning. You have to have lived and understand how to budget, where your money comes from, and the whole thing now with, you know, reevaluating the cost of the house. So I think, you know, for their feedback, it's not taking into account some of the more practical things that have to be considered when you put a vote out there, so.
Any others? Ms. Stats?
Not to pile on, but I also don't think there should be a vote for 16, 17-year-olds. I think I'd be more likely to agree with it if this were across all elections, or at least local and state elections. I'm guessing the reasoning behind this is because, you know, their education, you know, is a big part of their lives, but arguably, what affects their education the most is, I would think, state decisions, you know, like what you've been talking about, Mr. Volpe. Not to mention, there's other things that's part of their lives that are in the hands of other elected officials. So with that logic, to be consistent, if they think it's their... Their opinions are valued for anything that impacts their lives, then it should be 16, 17-year-olds could also vote in all elections. But they're not saying that. They're saying that their input should only matter for board elections. So, and along with the points that Ms. Nurse and Ms. Jackson made, I do not think that they should vote for board elections.
Yeah, I'll say, I don't have a too strong of an opinion. I do like the idea of getting kids interested in voting, so that when they're full-fledged adults, they're actually showing up to vote. I think that's a bigger problem in our country, that not enough people vote in elections. So I, from that side of it, I see there's a benefit in getting them into voting and realizing its importance, but it's a tough decision whether a 16-year-old is mature enough or experienced enough to cast a meaningful vote. So, those are my thoughts. So, there's my thoughts. All right, I don't see any other comments, so I will, I will close that public comment session. We have no more on the action agenda, but we do need to move back into executive session to complete the last item on our original one, which was the CSA evaluation, as that is statutorily required before the end of the month. So I will take a motion to move into executive session, and we will close, okay. Ms. Stats, go before we move.
I just want to say, I just want to say a couple.
Sure, sure, sure.
Well, one thing, I just wanted to mention, you mentioned that we were at senior awards night, and in our conversation with you and me, Mr. Marini, we were really admiring how Ms. Poval, the Director of School Counseling, and her counselors, and especially her secretary, Ms. McClary, I think that's how you say her name, all the work that they put into it, because it's so well-run, and just starts right on time and moves quickly, and honors a lot of our students. I also went to an NJASBA conference on AI, which was very interesting and illuminating. And I went to the Locks of Love Assembly at Amsterdam School, where students and staff, and even alumni from, that are now at Otten, donated their hair for people who have lost hair to cancer or other medical issues. And I also, at Amsterdam, went to the Community Coffee Card at Amsterdam, where students serve coffee and treats.
Awesome. So I know that make that clear. If there's anybody else that wants to make any more public comment before we close.
I was thinking about what I wanted to say about NJ 16, and I decided I actually wanted to speak in favor of NJ 16, since it was a five to four, from what I understand that vote. So I think when students are advocating for themselves, I just looked at it as this particular vote, not necessarily, but I actually think that if we're going to lower the age for voting for school board, why not for the other state as well as national elections? In the sense that this is the future, they are our future. And I was informed that, because one of the things, Ms. Jackson, you were saying about the tax, I would actually love it for if only people who own property got to vote, but that's not possible. So given that the students are the ones who are most impacted by who is on the school board, I think that it's, it's something that I would support. I think that that's important for them to voice their opinion. From what I understand, I don't know where I read it, in Newark, where it was, not very many students took part in it.
3%, I think, 3%.
So that's unfortunate. I think that it would be great for students to perhaps have that as part of their education, perhaps in social studies and so forth, so that they could understand what each candidate's platform is, or what they, what they believe in. The other thing is that 16-year-olds are actually not required to go to school. So I think that that also is, I don't know if that's in favor or against it, but I think that that would, I just think that it's a good idea, that they should have that opportunity. Especially our student representative who graduated, I mean, she advocated strongly for it. I think it's worth a shot to try.
I mean, just to be clear, I voted yes on this, but I wasn't very strong either way, so.
Can I just clarify one thing for the public? We're saying five, four, and people voted on this. There was just a straw poll taken among board members, and the board does not have any jurisdiction or authority to allow 16-year-olds to vote. I was just getting an opinion from the township committee who can make that decision. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. No action taken by the board, this is just a discussion point. All right, any other board members before we move back into exec? All right, so we will move back into executive session, no action will be taken, we will adjourn the meeting from executive session. So at this point, we'll take a motion to move into exec, and that will close for the evening the public part of this meeting. So can I get a motion? Move a second?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? All right, we'll see you next month.